Item number O. Consideration of an ordinance appointing Gerald Davis to the position of police pension board trustee for one year, term for the village of Broadview, county of Hood, state of Illinois.
Most to the table. Sorry. Probably most by trustee McCreary and probably second by trustee Moore to table this item. All in favor?
No.
Let me get this one. I'm trying to...
Trustee Abraham, yes, absent. Trustee Benson?
Yes.
Trustee Howard? No. Trustee McCreary?
Let me defer to the attorney before I... Mr. Attorney, with a no or a yes vote to table this, I want to make sure that we pull this off. That's what the...
Yeah, a vote to no, a vote of no will... Obviously, they get so this is not tabled, which is probably the desired result because this item should just be pulled off the agenda, but as it follows the Robert Hoover's order, it would just be maybe no vote at all, or no motion at all, so that would fall off, off the agenda, and there would be no issue, so...
Where's your reference?
To vote, well, again, advice on vote, a vote of no to what you... the motion on would then result in another motion to, uh, to, uh, to whether they approve or not. Uh, it was motioned by, uh, trustee McCreary and seconded by, uh, trustee Hardwood, right?
No.
Trustee Morrison?
I'll take it.
Did anybody second the motion?
I seconded, I seconded the motion, I tell you.
Okay. So now we have got trustee Benson. Yes?
I said yes.
No?
No.
He said no.
Let me explain it again. You guys want to vote on table this motion?
Can I have a simple vote?
We do not want to table this. We want to vote on...
Right, so if you don't want to table the motion, if you want to table the motion, then you'll vote yes. You don't want to table the motion, you'll vote no. It's impossible. No, obviously, if you don't want to consider this.
You just told them how to vote.
No.
No.
Okay, the motion fails.
Motion to table, now.
Motion to table fails.
Want you to read it again, so it's clear.
Item number O. Consideration of an ordinance appointing Gerald Davis to the position of police pension board trustee for one year, term for the village of Broadview, county of Hood, state of Illinois.
Now, just as a point of order, if you do not vote, or do not second the vote, the motion, then it will die as a matter of...
Item motion. Here is a motion. The item will be treated.
Item number P. Consideration of, consideration of an ordinance appointing Tom to, to the position of budget officer for the village of Broadview, county of Hood, state of Illinois.
Motion to approve. Proudly voted by trustee Moore, probably seconded by trustee McCreary to approve this item. Any questions, comments from the board, starting with trustee McCreary?
Well, actually, I debated about whether or not, um, I wanted to include this in the items to be pulled, because on the one hand, I do realize that Mr. Hood has been, uh, has had a number of challenges in trying to get the budget together in time. However, um, as budget officer, it is his obligation to get our budget together by the end of fiscal year. So while I do think that he's doing the best job he can, I, again, am concerned that we still won't have budget for this. So for that reason, I, I decided that I didn't.
Thank you, trustee McCreary. Trustee Moore?
Yes, I, I think Tom's doing a good job. Uh, he's doing more bad than good thing. Uh, I feel like that, uh, I take that back. He's doing more different. He working, he working just like everybody else. We all, I have, you know, that sits in front of us, that's just like the vote we just had, you know? People say, "Well, you don't understand that?" You know? There's a lot of stuff that you wouldn't understand if you were just sitting up here. This is not just sitting here trying to figure, "Oh, yes, you know, yes." No, we're trying to make the right decision, not to quit. So I think that Tom is doing a good job. So obviously, why would we replace somebody who's already doing a good job? You know, we, we all got problems about something, you know, but I don't think that replacing anybody at this juncture, I mean, the team is solid.
Yes, yes.
I feel like the team is solid. You know? A lot of people not happy with the president, but I mean, he's doing the best he can. Okay, so, you know, I think Tom's doing a good job. You know, that's my comment.
Trustee McCreary?
Again, I think, uh, Tom's done an excellent job. He's always willing for, um, questions. Any questions that I have, he's answered them confidently, and I think he has an excellent handle on our budget, and, um, he's making the best decisions in all the departments and areas for businesses.
Thank you, trustee McCreary. Trustee Howard?
No.
Trustee Benson?
Yes, I just want to make the point that, uh, some people are voting, I think, on what their personal feelings are for these positions. And I think that he, as a village, or, I'm sorry, as a board, should be voting on whether or not these people can fulfill these positions for the village, for the best, be the best that they can be for the village, not just our personal decisions. So my vote is for the village, not my personal decision, and I think that he has been doing a good job. That is the end of my comment.
Trustee Nelson?
Thank you very much.
I can say that, uh, my...
Mr. President? Excuse me? I would like to make another comment.
Actually, I have a question.
Trustee Benson, uh, you make a very valid point. I would like to, uh, make a point to everyone that while numbers are numbers are numbers, it's, uh, in my opinion, my observation, and my experience with our current budget officer, that we probably get the most accurate, most detailed reports and information as we look at our finances that I've seen since prior to being on the boards of trustees. We get a very comprehensive outlook on the overall abilities, and we get a department by department, uh, budget analysis. And Tom is very meticulous about it, and he goes through the process and those set of revenues that are coming in, how they're coming in from the state and other taxing bodies and other entities as it comes to building programs. And when we create a budget, and we've had detailed conversations about it, Tom and I have along with the finance department, that we actually look at actuals as opposed to projections. Uh, we didn't take last year's numbers and just plug them into this year's budget. So those numbers are very much, uh, in line with what the expectations are, and Tom does an excellent job with that. And he's also available, so it's very friendly. Tom, I met him on Sunday. We were here for only two hours Sunday talking about this.
Madam Burton, your vote, vote.
Trustee Abraham, yes. Trustee Benson?
Yes.
Trustee Howard?
Yes.
Trustee Brown Arena?
Yes.
Most to you.
Item, uh, item, uh, oh, item. A8, consideration of an ordinance permitting certain sections of traffic, traffic gathered or tighter of every mobile vehicle and traffic to reflect the changes in certain traffic patterns for the village of Broadview, county of Hood, state of Illinois.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Okay, but probably most by trustee McCreary and probably second by trustee Hardwood to, uh, approve this particular ordinance. Chief, is your ordinance?
Yes.
Want to talk about it? There's nobody here because they can't listen to you. There are no opinions for us, so we'll try to get it through to you.
Sure, well, I'll also have the fire chief.
Fire chief as well, yeah.
So you have the chiefs discussing this. So, police department observed an increase in criminal activity as well as traffic flow off Seventeenth Avenue. Basically, we looked at, uh, Beat One. We identified eight beats in the village of Broadview, starting, so Beat One is known as, as the A-verse. We conducted an analysis to determine the crime against persons, property, the drug-related offenses, and then we also looked at the traffic flow. What's the traffic going in that area off of Seventeenth, like, and Harvard, Thirteenth, et cetera? We also made some comparisons to the other beats. Beat One compared to the two, three, four, et cetera. Beat One had the highest incidents in town. The analysis also showed that the offenders coming from outside Broadview, specifically in Maywood, crimes against persons, Maywood residents are the primary offenders, and crimes against property, those who could not really identify who the offenders were, because usually it's, "My car was stolen," or, "My, uh, someone stole my radio and my car," so it's unknown person, so a lot of that was unknown. But at the end of the day, the final phase was the analysis of the traffic flow. So we looked at, uh, we identified November sixteenth, November fifteenth, fourteenth, thirteenth, and we looked at Baton Avenue between certain hours, we looked at Lexington between certain hours, and we looked at Fillmore between certain hours. When it showed that people were violating the traffic flaws in those areas, they were bypassing the traffic light at Baton and Seventeenth, and going through Lexington, cut through Thirteenth, getting on, uh, sixty, cut through Sixty to getting on the highway, so they're avoiding the traffic control device and cutting through the neighborhoods. Also, we looked at the traffic flow by the schools, and a lot of people running the stop signs and speeding. Most of the residents, or most of the offenders were from outside the Broadview area. So, what was decided was, I spoke with the mayor, told him what the concerns of the police department was. Uh, as part of the safety committee, we had a meeting, the safety committee had a meeting which comprised of fire chief, myself, public works, and I believe the building department. And we looked at the analysis, we talked about some, some, uh, alternatives, some options, and we came up with an option, the safety committee then looked at the possibility of cul-de-sac any, the area of, of the A-verse, of Beat One, that we identified where we were going to call the sack, and, uh, why we should call the sack. And part of the understanding or, or discussion was, control and contain that area. So we don't want the criminal aspect coming in, and we don't want the flow of traffic also coming in. We want to direct the flow of traffic out of that area onto Seventeenth. We're going to identify one ways to the alleys, no traffic through, and we want to, again, eliminate the criminal activity from coming from Maywood into the Broadview area.
Like the police chief said, the area we're talking about is the A-verse from Baton to Roosevelt to Seventeenth, the first. So, the chief said, the safety committee, we came up with the cul-de-sack idea. What we're looking at doing is cul-de-sacking, putting cul-de-sacks in, uh, in the alley between Seventeenth and Sixteenth Avenue at Baton. Sixteenth Avenue in Baton, Fifteenth Avenue in Baton, Fourteenth Avenue in Baton. Lexington and Thirteenth Avenue and Fillmore at Thirteenth Avenue. Then we will also include four-way stops, four-way stop signs at each intersection from Seventeenth to Thirteenth on Harvard. So Sixteenth, Fifteenth, Fourteenth avenues at Harvard will all be a four-way stop. What this is to do is to keep people from just shooting down Roosevelt, trying to get to Baton to get on the highway away from Seventeenth Avenue. Um, we've looked at a couple different options, with a hammerhead.
The alley south.
Yeah, the alley south, yeah, the alley south, um, at Sixteenth would be closed, and then all the alleys going will be directed as one ways going south from Baton. Uh, so they will no longer be able to cut down the alleys as well, you'll make those alleys, so that way the residents will still have access on the alleys as well. Looked at two options, hammerheads and a cul-de-sack, and, um, we had, um, chief's going to get into a little bit more, but we did have our various meetings. We had a town hall meeting with the residents, every other, for the process that we're looking for. We did come up with a couple options.
So the safety committee made a recommendation to proceed with the cul-de-sack concept. We identified two types of cul-de-sack, round cul-de-sack or a hammerhead cul-de-sack. So we had to determine, obviously, fire, we had to determine the buses, where the school at Roosevelt is right in the area, we also had to determine the garbage, how is that going to affect, we identified, what we call all four, oh, the postal office, so we contacted all four entities, no problem with cul-de-sacks. We looked at other villages that had cul-de-sacks, how it affected them, no problem there with that type of transportation flow. Uh, we also, well, with the fire, no problem.
No problem with the ambulance?
No, no, no. So, um, we also contacted those municipalities, and we looked at what their crime, if the crime went down after they pulled the cul-de-sack, yes, it did. Traffic flow was controlled as well. So the next step was to send letters to those residents within Beat One, which is the A-verse, and invited them to a meeting here with the safety committee. Our warrant was presented to them, and we identified the who, what, when, and where, and, uh, we then asked them to provide us their input on what they wanted to see in that cul-de-sack. A, whether they wanted a cul-de-sack, and B, if you did, what type of cul-de-sack, and then C, if plant, uh, what was it?
Planters.
Planters, what type of planters did you want?
Wayne's seeds.
Land, the landscaping, we asked them. So that survey was given to the residents that were here, uh, and they provided feedback, and in the feedback, the information was, yes, they wanted a cul-de-sack, B, they would prefer a hammerhead, and yes, absolutely, they wanted landscaping. So the next step in, in the safety committee was to present it to the development review committee, and that's where we brought in the engineers, we brought in public works, and we, uh, we sat down with the attorney, and now we looked at what, how, who, when, and all that. The next step is, the review committee then made them make the recommendation to the board that, uh, this is what we, as both the safety and the development, well, the review committee, is recommending to the board that we should move forward with a cul-de-sack in Beat One. My son, continue.
Well, we saw, uh, trustee Benson's question, yeah, we, we looked at all the entities, police, fire, ambulance service, doesn't affect any of that for us. We already have presently a couple cul-de-sacks in our industrial park that we routinely have to deal with on a daily basis, so for us, it's not, it's not anything to do, so it won't affect our fire service or ambulance service, won't affect garbage pickup, postal service, or the buses for Roosevelt School, which is our...
And the snow, the snowplows, all of course, won't affect, uh... Other, all other towns in our areas have, uh, obviously, Chicago has, and, uh, it's successful.
Thank you, chief. Questions for the board, starting with trustee McCreary?
Do we have any idea what this will cost? What the cost of constructing the cul-de-sacks is, and where this will come in the budget, whose budget will it come from?
That's, uh...
We have public works, had those figures, we've been working on that.
Actually, um, I'll speak to that in a minute, trustee McCreary. You got any other questions? I'll talk about the financial issue.
Other than that, let me say that I do think that, I, I like the idea behind this, of trying to contain and control the traffic, and especially as it relates to the Eisenhower and people with bad intentions being able to make a quick entry in that city population. So I do, I do appreciate that. Um, my concern, as I said, right now, looking at this would be the cost and where it would come in our budget.
Trustee Moore? No. Trustee Moore?
Yes, I was actually at the presentation and, uh, meeting that the chief gave an excellent presentation, and, um, I was really, really pleased to hear what we intend on doing and the possible results of knocking down some of that crime, uh, as we're seeing this, so I support this one hundred percent, and I think it's a good thing for the village.
Trustee?
Um, yeah, I have a question. My biggest concern with cul-de-sacking is that it provides an area for hangouts. So when we talk to the other municipalities, do we also find out if there were any crimes that actually happened at those cul-de-sack areas, or anything of that nature that, that would be issued in this place?
Doesn't involve the... You had said she, well, those disagree, that was a crime, was reduced to, was reduced to beautiful.
Overall crime, like, I'm saying, like, did any, were there any instances where things happened at the cul-de-sack?
That's all, so, may, we're not going to, yeah.
Yeah, I know that, but...
Nothing that was brought to our attention.
Okay.
Trustee Benson?
I really don't have a lot, I just had a small correction in this traffic flow analysis, but I can show you that's what I'm talking about, but nothing.
Well, I live in the area, and, uh, for me, it's, uh, it's almost like a brother fresh air. Um, I've experienced watching vehicles travel down Sixteenth at fifteen, sixty miles an hour trying to beat Seventeenth Avenue traffic or shop. I've experienced vehicles traveling at sixty, seventy mile an hour alongside the expressway trying to get to the expressway and trying to find, as I, I was trying. Uh, I've experienced kids trying to jump out of the way of cars that ran stop signs and stuff, they're getting out of school. Most of the cars to Chief Point are not residents of the village of Broadview, but if you're passing through trying to hit two little school, from little school, two years, they from years, they just happen. Uh, we did a very extensive research on this. This is not something that was, uh, quickly thought out, it was not something that was a knee-jerk, uh, decision. This goes back some seven months in the making from the initial conversation piece. Uh, and I actually solicited my neighbors and friends in the area as it relates to the cul-de-sacking and, you know, traffic flows, and got their feedback on before we went to the safety committee, the chiefs, and asked them, you know, "What can we do about this? Is cul-de-sacking an option? You know, what are the pros and cons on it, and what's going to happen?" Couple of things came out of that. Number one was the safety aspect, uh, because criminals don't, because, because of cul-de-sacking and, and it reduces traffic rate, people tend to be outside in the yard more, older people are not as afraid to be out. Kids are more safe because it reduces traffic and moves up stories with the cul-de-sack. And I've got a friend that actually sold, owned and sold a property in a cul-de-sack area after the fire. And the property value on this, uh, particular parcel actually increased after the cul-de-sack. He ended up getting almost one and a half times the value of his property, uh, because the property value actually went up, so it was always, it was a plus for property owners as well. So along with the safety issue and the minimizing of the, uh, unsafe individuals in the neighborhood, I think it's a good process, a good program.
Madam President, your vote, please.
Trustee Abraham, yes. Trustee Benson?
Yes.
Trustee Howard?
Yes.
Trustee McCreary?
Yes.
Trustee Moore?
Yes.
Trustee Brown Arena?
Let me tell you about the finance, I'm sorry.
Thank you.
Uh, just being private in finance, the building's not paid. It's private, it's not us. Uh, you'll get that in the future, uh, but it's not us, the building's not paid.
The finance on that deal was privately funded.
Well, tell us what it is. What's the problem with you telling us?
I don't know that that really makes me feel that secure. As much as I do like the overall thought of this, until I understand what the deal is for paying for it, uh, I have to vote no.
Okay, and the motion carries for...
Item number eight, D. Consideration of an ordinance authorizing a change order in regards to the fourteen dam containment program, Harvard to Baton Drive project for the village of Broadview, county of Hood, state of Illinois.
Motion to approve. My second. This is CBT grant. So there's no second? And most to you.
I'll second. I'll wait this one out.
There are probably most by trustee McCreary and probably second by trustee Hardwood. Uh, this is a change order to the redevelopment of fourteen dam, CBT, if you don't have a mistake. Uh, village engineer, uh, goes completely to the board because the family is, they need them to take, or go for company, they need them to take.
Um, for the village, originally, when they did an application for the fund, for funding for really fourteen, we requested a hundred and thirty-one thousand dollars in CBT funding. When the grant was awarded, the county reduced it to ninety thousand dollars. So at that point, we reduced the scope of funding amount to close to more close than that, to ninety thousand dollars in available. The day it came in, it was a hundred and five thousand dollars in progress for it. Um, just for construction, on the county, we had to set up to give down extra forty-one thousand dollars to bring it back up to you. What do you guys want? Came back to the village, and they suggest, okay, had to go through a whole series of steps to the federal funding, they have a public hearing, and there's going to be amended agreements, wait till then we can sign, get signed out of the county. The issue was, we needed to do the work, we get, we're sitting in, neither, I don't see no doubt, and you needed to get the construction on, on the project we had out of it, and additional work, there was no way to come back and build it next year, anyway. So the town halls, we had, we spoke back out, basically, what we did was, is initial period of order, but the main thing we did was, we had to, you could take the parking area out of school. We had to eliminate the original, we didn't have no budget, we had to have that back in. We did that, change order not yet, if you'd like from that change order, the change order couldn't be officially brought to the village, and so we got the, okay, this, right, CBT, which we just got in the last couple weeks. This, um, change order's here now, just to down, down the project, and the amount of grants, a hundred and thirty-one thousand, on contract, a hundred and thirty-seven thousand. So the village, originally, thought they were going to have this, from fifteen thousand, now you're like, oh, a hundred percent.
Thank you, trustee Moore. Questions, comments from the board, starting with trustee McCreary?
None.
Trustee Moore? Uh, trustee McCreary? Trustee Hardwood?
Yes.
Trustee? All in favor?
Aye.
All in favor? Here is none, motion carries for the change order.
Item number eight, C. Consideration of an ordinance approving the rezone of certain parcels within the village, Texas limit, to the village on the code, in map with limit, to the village on the map of the village of Broadview, county of Hood.
Motion to table.
Second.
Probably most by trustee McCreary and probably second by trustee Hardwood to table this item. All in favor?
Aye.
All in favor? Here is none, this is an item to table until the making of a...
Item number eight, D. Consideration of an ordinance declaring the house its personal property at twenty forty-seven South Seventeenth Avenue as surplus property and authorizing the fire department to perform drills and to cause the demolition and removal of schools for the village of Broadview, county of Hood, state of Illinois.
Motion to approve. Probably voted by trustee Hardwood, probably second by trustee Benson to approve this item. Any questions, comments from the board, starting with trustee McCreary?
Uh, yes. Let me say first of all that I really do like the idea of, whenever possible, being able to use properties like this, like we did with the Jade Garden back in two thousand, as training facilities. Um, I do have a couple of quick questions. First of all, I want to be sure that I do understand this correctly. Mr. Fornaro, we are simply declaring the improvements on the property as surplus and not the real estate property itself as surplus?
That's accurate. That's correct.
Okay. And I assume that that will include the garage that will also be burned down, torn down, whatever, not just the house? whatever, not just the house?
Right, nothing. Eventually, the house is going to be coming out of, we're using the garage for storage right now, so we're training it, so.
And part of the ordinance also authorizes us to spend whatever money is necessary to accomplish this. Do you have an idea of what it's going to be costing for the ultimate demolition and haulaway? And is this something that is coming out of the fire budget? Or do we know where the money would come from for that?
Come out of the training budget, or, 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 they never told me.
And do we have an idea of how much that would end up running?
Pretty much depends on how much luck we have for it, which I don't anticipate.
Like sweep up ashes?
Couple of rooms and shops. There won't be a lot of that.
Thank you.
Trustee Moore?
No.
Trustee McGree?
No.
Trustee Harvard?
First off, I would, I would like to thank the chief. Earlier this week, I saw this on the agenda, I actually talked to him, he's like, wait, wait, it looks like we already moved on without the board knowing about it. After he explained it to me, I was a little more at ease, so I would like to go on record and just tell you thank you for your explanation as well as the village attorney. And no, I'm good with this.
Trustee Benson?
I think we've spoken about this a while back. About doing this with that piece of property, so that probably, I guess to the new trustees, this will be new, but to old trustees, I remember this. No, it wasn't approved, also one that could afford both items. That's my comment. I just want to let them know this, this is not new to some of us.
Okay, well, can you correct me on things on the board together? This probably has been used as a training location for some good time, and how is that applicable? That's correct. We've done other training, non-destructive type training there, where we've done services and hours, or gone on our roofs, break and stall, ladders and type of stuff. That's been a non-destructive type training, which is what the question was when we were there, just a week ago, putting up ladders and plowing around the roofs and stuff. But now we're getting into the destructive. Did it rent for it? Pardon? Did it go rent? No, we tried. Tried to go through state fire ownership, but those were all tried out. So we're, we're keeping costs down to a fair amount. All in. Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
All in. All in both. Here are none of the motion carriers.
Item number 8. Consideration of a ordinance establishing comprehensive adult entertainment management standards for the Village of Barby County, Cook State of Illinois.
Motion to table. Probably most by trustee McGree, probably same by trustee Harvard, table it since that. All in favor?
Aye.
All in. Here are none of the side motion carriers.
Item number 9. Consideration of a motion to withdraw and revoke certification for any judgment entered against Henry Vicencic in the case of Chicago Jones T. Room LLC versus the Village of Barby and to draft a ordinance consistent therewithin for the Village of Barby County of the State of Illinois. Motion to approve.
Sorry.
Probably motion by trustee McGree, probably same by trustee Moore to approve this as an item. This particular agenda item is in reference to former mayor Vicencic, who has selected to attend his own counsel in litigation pending against the village. And this ordinance is specifically releasing us and separating us from him as it relates to indemnification for lawsuits that may be incurred due to a lawsuit. So what it says is, if, if in fact, we do not prevail and there's a judgment against the village and against the mayor individually, he's not indemnified under the village, under the village umbrella. So he could potentially lose everything, but now he's exposed as a private individual. Figure out why, by someone who wanted to do that, I don't know. Any comments or questions from the board starting with trustee?
No, thanks.
Trustee Moore? No. Trustee McGree?
No.
Trustee Moore?
No.
All in.
Aye.
All in. Here are none of the motion carriers.
Item number 9. Application for a ordinance payment funds, total $9,279.
Motion to approve.
Probably most by trustee McGree, probably same by trustee Harvard to approve these intended items. Are these all police department? I want to, we'll start with, uh, date tag data, uh, publishing that.
That is the police department.
Trustee Harvard.
Datacon publishing, it's $999 for criminal complaint software.
And they add that, just criminal complaint, trying to get into the 21st century fight? Getting away from type rights, getting into PC? Questions from the board, uh, boys, Harvard, trustee Marino?
No questions.
Trustee Moore? No question. Trustee McGree?
No.
Trustee Harvard?
No.
Trustee Benson?
No.
Madam President, who will call?
Trustee Abraham, Thadson, trustee Benson?
Yes.
Trustee Hartman?
Yes.
Trustee McGuire?
Yes.
Trustee Moore?
Yes.
Trustee Brown Marino? As much as I wish I could, but not a budget, I'd have to vote no.
And that motion carries for?
Item number 9. I'm sorry, item number 10. Committee reports, bill of due?
You got two more on it. Timothy Sharp?
You'll hurry.
She only did one.
Oh, I'm sorry.
And they're separated out of the part of?
And this is, this is?
This is finance.
Obviously, any individual votes on the purchase orders?
Yeah.
What's that? What's the?
We separated them out. The original motion was just based on the first one they offered.
Yes, that's for the whole, the purpose of the three was for the residents to see the individuals was being charged under purchase orders and vote department. Committee reports to give their report under that, or, you know, under the occasion.
You call the vote based on the total expenditure, correct or not?
Correct.
Correct. So you voted for the expenditure of all, really?
Correct.
We did, we're free. Well, let's, 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 you've got actuarial services here for Timothy Sharp, which is a government accounting standards, uh, where it requires governments to be required post employment benefits, other pensions, healthcare, retiree, based on actuary updated every three years. Land activity was in '09, so we required it to leave in 2012. This is a requirement that relates to financial reporting inside the client with Tim Sharp. Uh, the next item was?
Self-.
Self, selling environment, oh, yeah. Payment for the Estesos pipe fitting, from the mechanical, the above listed firehouse for the fire department, fire glass pipe installation removed as well as only. New construction will remain as affiliated with the three new waters and any new installation, and the cost of that is $700,000. So those were the three expenditures, you got the information here. Any comments from the board on the other two expenditures?
Just want to clarify, the self-keeping environment to company, um, the reason why we're doing the Estesos payment is so that when it's time to do the HBS, we want to have to turn around and stop that and go back.
I, I, did you? I'm sorry, the third one?
Did, did you approve it on the first one? Yeah, you, you approved all of my first one, we only read one of them.
Just because there's a little confusion, so.
Yeah, I was just clarifying in case anybody had any questions.
Item number 10. Committee report, building of public property, trustee Abraham?
Has anybody ever reported, trustee Abraham?
No.
Okay. Thank you.
Business committee, trustee Benson?
No report this week.
Thank you, trustee.
Paying for lease and sub service, trustee Harvard?
No report.
Thank you, trustee Harvard.
Streets, sidewalks and alleys, trustee McGuire?
Thank you, Madam President, the board of trustees, residents. I just have to stop and thank residents, even the ones that have done for the evening, on showing love and caring about the village. It just makes us know that our job here is not, has not gone unnoticed, and the importance of some things that we talk about in BOMR up here do still matter to you. So I would like to see every meeting attended as well. I especially have to take my hat off and thank the people that spoke on the issues ahead, starting with Markey Smith, Redwood Rivers. Reverend Terry, who I have the utmost respect for and always have since I've known you. Even the residents in Delwood, or from Delwood, the two Williams sisters and also our own Delwood brothers.
Just a word, we want to be discourteous to trustee, but the mayor has established a policy related to the committee reports as it relates to discussions on committee report level, just on the matter of, and if it's in relation to the street sidewalks families, or obviously any of the ones with the policy, and then is trying to enforce that policy. So I, no disrespect, I apologize, but.
No, no apologies, I, I, thank you, thank you. But thank the residents. Continue on move number four. As, as regards to Public Works, I didn't say anything relevant, but I just want to make sure that you all know, because it's probably no mystery to you that our streets have never been clean, like the mayor said. Our Public Works Department has had a complete and total re, the overhaul since taking over in 2009. Mayor may not be aware of the status of our Public Works Department when we first spoke, it was all contracted out, and it was a little weak, and it took us a minute to get handled, started with the building commissioner, David Upshaw, was the interim director until we had our new director in the fake destruction department. But that, that total overhaul was necessary in getting the things that we have in place today started. We currently have three state certified water, uh, water filters. Entire group, when that Public Works Department is right now, is CEO licensed. We've implemented a uniform trash collection program, completed with random tores. The streets have never been cleaner due to the garbage, but we still have garbage cans that, you know, people throw in the curb sideways and they fly over. Not to the point where they're used to with the metal cans and the tops falling off of the place, and the raccoons and the wolves climbing in and becoming not only health and safety, but just high sort of our community, it looks standard. The director has the respect and dedication of this entire awesome crew. I've never seen a bunch of guys as dedicated as these guys to keep our village clean. Director has initiated proactive meetings with the MWRD to mitigate future flood.
Point of view, that is under my committee?
Yeah. I'm, I'm not sure if you know the street sidewalks and alleys.
Sure, it's all water and sewage.
We have retrofitted the streets with a back machine that is now to maintain regularly the sewers, as we have not been doing with that. So with all that being said, Public Works Department has extended, like, a little bit of pollution, potassium, and we have to use ice water for Public Works. We used to have an excellent Public Works Department, but today, it stands as, as it has, has never still been as good. So I'm proud to be part of it, proud to have Richard Ames in charge of it again. Happy for our project. That concludes my report.
Trustee Moore?
Uh, I don't really have to report again, but I guess we'll be trying to get together with Tom Hood so we can get the budget out, and I know we will be having a meet. So in the next board meet, I'm gonna have a date. We'll come in here. I'm sorry, man.
That's okay. I have a committee report. Trustee Brown Marino? Um, I, I will go, I'll report this evening.
Thank you, trustee.
I do have a brief announcement on letter two reading from Lindoak School. As far as the board passing the, um, I'm sorry, from the board passing the communication today for one reason, I just wanted to make mention and make, uh, they did have a certificate of reliability insurance. Those, the notice came from Lindoak School District 92. This is to notify your organization that Lindoak School will be conducting a summer food program during the summer. The address and dates of the operations are start from June 4th, 2012 through June 30th, and it's through Monday through Friday. They will be serving breakfast at eight o'clock AM and lunch at 12:30. This is one to see the programs where Ms. Green, the food service director, applied for seating for a food for the summer, so the kids are able to get there free, as long as they comply. This would be posted also in the village vest review. And that concludes my report.
Thank you.
For me today, it was, uh, actually made the motion to see the board meeting, maybe people would be there for the board, because unfortunately, they came only because of hearing about adult use issues. I wish they would come and be more involved in village issues and activities on a daily and weekly, monthly basis. There's a couple of things I want to point out, some comments from some of the residents. Uh, one, you're part of the jail day, that's not to replace your market, that's not a double force, you're not being replaced or reassigned. So, don't look at that. The other things were, Jan Baptist, there was a question about a lot of me and me and our village, uh, new drug, and why, Ms. Baptist in particular wasn't there, well, Ms. Baptist chose not to, um, to report for the food better. So he had budget officer, Tom Hood, asking to report for the food better for family. Uh, there was some discussion, there was some comments about the website in today's comments, including, uh, and, and not specifically issues related to the food pantry, the park district, village clerk, and other individuals. We will make sure we can, updating information on the website. So we will make sure that we get the website updated. I will talk to the people at the food pantry. They have not given me any information. I don't have information from other entities. I do know the park district has their own thing going on, and I also know that the circle wants to have on the website, too. But we will make sure we give as much consolidated information as possible to the website going Reverend Terry talked about family values. He covered about the type of time the girl of years and was, and I expect always will be, and he talked about the increase and decrease value of our homes, and talked about the change of the board, and that we thought it was going to be a new day, and not the build of a network society. Blood has changed, it may not seem so right away to something, but it has changed, it's changing dramatically. I see within the, uh, within the walls of the village hall, within the walls of the police department, out there on the streets every day, and in the fire department. So you've never gotten more, the police department, fire department, they've never gotten more information as it makes the village finances, as you've gotten since we've been in office. So with that being said, I would like you to know that it is a new day, and we are making some changes, and you're all changed, if you guys are buying, you're a better village girl of you. Uh, as you saw, we had a presentation today about political businesses and development girl of you, which I'm still pursuing it, it's just that the economy is such that it's just not going to happen as bad as it would otherwise have been happening. And it is what it is. Uh, the last, the two, two things left, uh, number one, the NALC, the National Association of Medicare, is out on the food drive. Uh, they do it annually, they do it every year, they're out this week. So their mailman in the neighborhood will probably be collecting, uh, non-perishable items, uh, for his food drives, they feed the hungry, uh, every year, so it would be valuable to the village. And the last thing, uh, Mr. Yancy, I apologize, I know you didn't have the notice to, uh, to speak, but it's kept addressed via phone now, please do so. Uh, because I know you've had some village meetings, and I know you came to me and you ran out of notices to come speak, so I apologize.
That's, that's okay. You don't have to apologize, I'm patient, I learned.
Mr. Yancy?
Yeah.
Absolutely.
Uh, when I was telling the mayor, I observed some of the day I was going to pay the Joe to pick up my, my some religious material, and I noticed that, you know, offices, they were all counted by the, by the, by the. And I noticed that, you know, offices, they were all counted by the, by the bank. And we had, um, attempted a robbery today. I don't know if any of you know that.
Yeah, thank you.
But what I noticed, I didn't know I was standing here not to make this announcement, but I, I, I noticed how organized and how professional that chief, tech, uh, officers were, how they was performing, how they was positioning themselves and dealing with this situation. And, uh, you know, so, you know, there's a such thing as saying, you know, give credit where credit is due. And, you know, a lot of times, you know, I was critical, uh, about the policemen's power as I related to the mayor and I shared with the chief. But I'm glad to see this new spirit that they have, this enthusiasm, this pride about their job. Their job is to serve and to protect. And they did it very professionally today. And he needed to be committed to how he always is. They had a new, uh, uh, spirit, new work about themselves as far as taking to his job. Another thing is that he asked me, uh, of course, I heard people talking about, they're talking about business and they was just, um, becoming a new feature and how Terry, like they serve the, you know, guard district. And, uh, and, and I know how he feel, even a long time, I've been in thirty years. And I've been involved actively into this community. You know, serving the president of Park District on, on Linda School Board, on the Peds Board and, and, and getting our scholarships with this and that, so, you know. You know, her and others getting our scholarships to the children and, and actively involved. But that's what we all have to do. We now, he asked me about the neighborhood watch thing. And, uh, we had been talking constantly, we was here. But we, we invite all of y'all to spread the word. We need all of you, you know, to cover eyes and ears called, yes, times have changed now. And, and you know that, that, you know, the, the drug, drug laws, whatever they want to come and sell, other things is, is trying to come into our communities. And, and we're not going to get that. It takes us to protect our village with courage and be the eyes and ears for our policemen. We have all of you to come involved. Because when you become involved, issues get resolved, remember? So that's what I want to be just, uh, you know, and then, ah, that's a new spirit, don't you? At the firehouse, that the guys, you know, I'm very glad to be served under you. And they all say positive things to you. And I will say to, to the board here, all of you, you know, has a responsibility to it. And I listen to all of you. But we have to come together to reason together, you know, for the better of this here village, you know? And, and things are in progress, are in motion. All we have to do is cooperate and get them kind of to work it out for you. And, and if you had support, they still, you know, part of our things, thumb down and, you know? And that's, you know, almost like a preaching pandemic. You know what I mean? Take myself now. I'll have to encourage you, keep on doing what you're doing, all of you. Just keep on doing what you're doing. And things going, it's going to manifest itself, so that's all.
Uh, thank you, Mr.. Um, and, and one last thing before I, uh, ask for, uh, uh, recess to, uh, examine session. Um, chief, we got some vehicles, uh, the police, uh, uh, we've been, we've been, uh, police vehicles have come out, uh, they're already here. I know they're getting striding and radio, anything like that. Do you want to give a detail on that before we?
Sure. Pursuing to the, uh, public and private partnership that the village had with the yard. Part of the agreement was that they were going to purchase vehicles for the police department. And, uh, the first offering vehicles are in, uh, one of them is already being used. The other two are being striped and outfitted for the officers. And the other part of the agreement was some, some cash. Of that cash, we're going to purchase another vehicle. So we're going to have four vehicles out at the, uh, on the show. Plus, we're going to do some other deployments of other vehicles. So there's going to be some new enhanced vehicles out there with a new logo of the police department and it would be better equipment. So thank you to the board for getting involved in the private public partnership with the yard. It was very successful.
You got some other things that you'll be telling them in the near future too, huh?
Correct.
Okay. Here you go. With, with that being said, other than taking motion to suspend? Okay, I'm sorry. Well, let's, let's move on to the, uh, the next item and, and I can see that one. Uh, we've got the opening of the bids, Madam President?
Uh, yeah, we. We're gonna actually open the bids up for the, um, HSBC. We received one, two, three, four bids. The first proposal came from, uh, pipe is, okay. Uh, pipe is was received, this bid from the, um, heat engineering company. They're located in London Heights. This is for sixty-three thousand four hundred and seventy-one dollars. This, um, second bid came in from mechanical contractor of Illinois. Heating ventilation is for sixty-one thousand one hundred and thirty-five dollars. Third bid, Bulldog Mechanical Heat. They're located at O'Far. Their bid came in at seventy-four thousand. The fourth bid came in from Power Mechanical Service. They're located in Paylos Heights. Eighty-four thousand. The last and final bid came in from West Side Mechanical, um, Design Field LLC. Eighty-five thousand five hundred. So that was the bid.
That's mechanical.
Anybody can handle that?
Those did the chemical.
The chemical.
So, uh, Mr. Mayor, the board, uh, public, we're going to go ahead and review this with our village head to confirm that, uh, they all meet the requirements of, uh, the process. It'll be before the, uh, quarter meeting, I mean, this is to, uh, to board the board's responsible that are, uh, that wasn't provided.
That, uh, they're taking a motion to suspend, break a board meeting in charge of the session. Sorry. The motion by Mr. McCreary, probably second by Morris. All the favor?
Aye.